Perez, I see a quorum, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have one item on our agenda, and it's our annual Renton School District Meet and Greet. Welcome, everybody. Because of the challenges of Zoom meeting, I am going to change the format of our meeting a little bit. So I will call each Renton School District Director as I see you in my screen, in the order that I see you in my screen. So you, each one of you can share, each one of you can introduce yourselves, share your goals for this meeting, as well as your priorities and ideas on how we can work together to serve our community. After I go around the room with all the school board directors, I will also introduce the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and then we will go with the council members, and I think we'll have time for questions, comments, and comments, and share concerns. So with that, the first person on my screen right now is Renton Board Director, Renton School District Board Director, Pantiel. Hi, Pam. Thank you for being with us.
Oh, well, thank you for having us. I look forward, I always look forward to, you know, our connections with the city and our meetings. I'm sorry that this is not in person, you know, in your offices this year, where yummy snacks and food would be served. You know, it's always the highlight of the year. I see Mr. Prince there has kind of got a little chuckle going on. But, you know, from my heart to yours, we just always appreciate any sort of collaboration and communication we have. And so, Pantiel, Renton School Board. And I'll just defer, I don't need five minutes. I just look forward to more conversation and listening and interacting. So, thank you.
You're muted, Ruth.
Thank you, Randy. When I want to learn, right, to mute myself. So next to my screen, I have Renton School District Board Director, Alisa Louis. Welcome.
Hi, thanks, everyone, for having us. Like Director Teal said, we just appreciate the time to get to see one another, even though not in person. Right now, I think the biggest things on my mind for collaboration are twofold. One, around just the impacts of COVID to the community and what that does for students and our businesses and our families, and what it could look like to best serve all of the Renton community through schools and the city collaboratively. And I know that there were some requests around saying our priorities and the answers, and I don't have any answers, or I think we'd be doing them, right? But I think just, that's kind of on my mind a lot. And the second thing would be around the big umbrella of equity and, yeah, just racial injustice and all of those things happening in our own community, in the schools and in the whole community. So, thank you all for collaborating with us. We do appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Now, Renton School Board Director Gloria Hodge. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Gloria Hodge from the Renton School Board, and I appreciate everyone's time and the opportunity, again, as the other directors had said, to join each other in conversation and continued collaboration. One of the priorities I have in mind is, as Director Louis mentioned, is just continued efforts with the pandemic. We know that there have been tireless efforts during these unfortunate times, but what are continued needs and how can we address them? Some areas such as homelessness, unemployment, addiction. I'm somewhat concerned with the different areas of concern that city and community members have brought up regarding homelessness. And so just continuing to engage with the community and stakeholders and venues to see how to support this crisis. And the second item that comes to mind is early learning opportunities. We have, we all know of our wonderful facility with Metalcrest, but yet how can we continue to partner and grow with additional children that are in need for early childhood education in Renton? With the program being at capacity, and there's many wonderful quality other providers throughout the city of Renton, even in-home providers, but how can we further serve them? One concern I do have with growth in this area and expanding, and this is also my professional area that I work with, is just as we grow other providers, making sure that they're not impacted with that growth. So those that are already existing and established, that we continue to be mindful of their programs and just to see how we continue to serve.
Thank you very much. Now, Renton School Board Director, Dr. Avanti Berquist. Welcome.
Hi, all. Thanks so much for having us. It's nice to see you all, albeit virtually. I have a couple of things I'm interested in. That big umbrella of equity and inclusion. So I think that can encompass a lot of things, and part of that is how our response to COVID. Just interested to see how the city is doing that work, excuse me, and how we as a district can collaborate on that. And then also, with the district working on social-emotional learning, and there's a lot of work in the state in mental health in schools, wondering how we can collaborate as a community on that. I have this dream for our community where we all speak the same social-emotional language, and I would love to be able to collaborate with the city on that.
Thank you, Dr. Berquist. And last but not least, Renton School Board Director, Stephanie McIrving. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're cutting a little bit.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Am I? Okay. I might need to switch over to a different mic.
Stephanie, you're frozen. We cannot hear you. But why we don't come back to the school?
Great to meet you all. We appreciate the opportunity to...
I'm sorry to cut you. You are cutting out. So let's see if it works better now that you removed your video, okay? Okay. Julia, can you help? Dr. McIrving, please. And in the meantime, I will move to welcome the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Damian Patiño. Damian, I never got pronounced last name. I'm so, so sorry.
Counsel President Perez. It's just pat your head, nod your head. That's the way I had to.
Okay, so, so, welcome. Thank you for joining us today, and I would love to hear also your ideas and how can we strengthen our relationship moving forward. I know that in the last meeting, we have a lot of plans and a lot of projects, and it was great, and then COVID hit, and all those ideas that we had, of course, have been put now on the bottom of the list because there are things that with the pandemic have a priority of importance. But if you could share with us a little bit about your ideas and how can we strengthen this relationship that we have with the school?
For sure. And just to echo what our board of directors have shared, we really just appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, and thank you for your leadership in the city. And one thing I appreciate is being able to pick up the phone and text or call the mayor at any point in time when we need to work on something. And so that relationship is really critical. And I really think that we're overall in a very good spot. I also, if the council does not know, next Wednesday is Board President Teal's final board meeting. So I do just want to thank her for her service, which has extended beyond the school district to the broader city and community. And President Teal, even though we're not able to break bread tonight, I do want to let you know that Councilmember Prince did send me some food. He sent me some stale candy just to make sure that it's the same quality of food that the council would have provided this evening. Thank you, Councilmember Prince, for that.
Excellent. Keep the tradition going.
Yeah, he probably got it from Al Tally, I suspect.
Thank you. I will note, I do remember my first meeting with Al Tally, that he making fun of us because we provide just not uncandies for one meeting. So it was memorable. So those are the greatest stories of our meetings. So now, I will do the same. I will go around with each one of the council members. So each one of you have opportunities also to share what are your priorities and the ways that we can strengthen this relationship and collaborate in the future. I'm gonna go by seniority. Councilmember Corman.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Gosh, it's nice to be here with all of you, even though it has to be virtual. And so I'm Randy Corman. I'm actually in my 27th year as city council member. And it's been a joyful time working with the school district all these years. I've seen so much change, so many schools rebuilt, and we've done so many, you know, countless safe walks to the school and things like that over the years, worked together on playgrounds and amenities. And we're, of course, we're taking some, I think, a little bit of unfair heat right now about the homeless. We'll be talking about that tonight. But I did want to sort of emphasize that, of course, and most of you know, through our Housing Authority and all the work that we do through shelters, we even have a day shelter at City Hall. We do a lot for the homeless. And I wanted to just, I hope I'm remembering this correctly. There's so many details I'm juggling this year. But we're actually making a big push for accessory dwelling unit housing to sort of, you know, bolster, have the single-family neighborhoods carry a little more load so that people don't end up in trailers and instead can find a cottage in a friend's backyard. And I think the school district agreed to waive impact fees to help us with that. So we've actually waived building fees, and we've even come up with designs. So we're actually really trying to make it feasible for people to have warm, safe, sanitary places to live in our city. And some of that will be an impact for the school district. But, you know, good on you for being willing to do that work. I will just say, sort of in closing, that I have, I raised five kids here, and my wife and I are enjoying five grandchildren here. They've all been active in, obviously, in the school district. Many of them have enjoyed the home program, which is the homeschool outreach program. Several of my kids have done both. They've done, you know, like high school at Hazen, and they've done the home program. That program's been wonderful for our family. All the kids have really thrived. And so I just appreciate all the creativity and working with the district, and it's certainly wonderful to see you all here tonight. And Pam, I will really miss you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. I see that Dr. Steve McIrving is back. Stephanie, I'm sorry. Stephanie McIrving is back. So Stephanie, you want to give it a try?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you so much, Ruth, for coming back to me. I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm Stephanie McIrving. I am the newest board member on the Renton School Board. And ironically, I was going to say that one of my interests in working with the council is around accessibility, one of them being access to technology for our students and families. Reliable internet being one of those things. So, yes, I'm really interested in learning more about what the city is up to and how we can just be, you know, strong partners together in accessibility to technology, to early childhood education, to social-emotional learning, as Dr. Berquist was mentioning earlier. I'm really looking forward to a strong partnership in things like even joint resolutions, just other ways that we should be supporting each other in the community and in the initiatives that we are trying to move forward. You know, it's always easier when you feel like someone's got your back in an initiative. And so just really looking forward to working together and brainstorming innovative ways that we can progress moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. McIrving. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And Pam, you know how much I will miss you, President Teal. I get to call you that one last time. And Al would really be like, why didn't you guys just deliver food to our individual homes? So, but no, that was probably the most memorable portion, meeting that we've had, joint meeting that we've had, where Al railed about the food for the majority of the meeting. But it did spark change, so good for Al. We've had such a great partnership throughout the years between the Renton School District and the city of Renton. I mean, the inclusive playground, the Baldwin facility. I think I just want to focus on ways that we can continue to strengthen and grow that partnership in any ways that are possible. I love what Steph said about technology access. That's really important as someone who has two kids that are using my bandwidth at the same time I am every day. So I'm just looking forward to our conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Ryan McIrving.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Hopefully, my bandwidth is doing okay. I think that's a great topic. And certainly, I know my virtual background's probably not helping, but I went ahead and went on cellular. So hopefully, now that we're on two different networks, things are going a little smoother. So I could go on and on because I think there are so many places for us to partner. And, you know, I think, I don't want to rehash everything that's been said other than to suggest where I want to see its channel and energy because I know we get together once a year, and then we trust staff to go off and do a lot of this work. And it makes me, it leaves me to wonder, you know, if we could have some ability to track better. Maybe rather than a once-a-year meet and greet, and I'm not trying to just suggest more meetings, but either have more frequent get-togethers that are shorter and less official, less formal, or like we do a council retreat once a year. If we had a longer, not necessarily, we do two days of a council retreat. I love you all, but that would probably be a little bit much, especially in the virtual environment. If we had some way we could really kind of hash through some of these issues and once we set out a work plan and see where we make progress on things that we can work together on. We should be working on accessibility issues, internet connectivity stuff together. We should be working on equity first and foremost together. These are priorities that we all share. We know this. But finding creative ways to do that, and whether that's going down to Olympia together, I guess, virtually this year, or working on being co-applicants on a grant regionally that we can partner on. We've done some great partnerships over the year, but I think there's so much room for more, and I'm excited to hear all the good ideas that you all have. And let's make these frequent communications, though, that we don't just forget about them in the time ahead. And I know, I know last year, 2020's been an anomaly, obviously. And so I'm not going to count anything from the last, because I think our last meeting really was great at setting the stage for that. And I think that, you know, as we've now kind of adjusted to this environment, we may have the opportunity to hopefully advance some of those items forward in the year to come.
Thank you, Councilmember McIrving. Councilmember Valerie Halber.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for being here. I echo everything that everybody's said on both sides of the table. And as a new council member, I really don't have much to add other than to say how completely impressed I was with how the school district pivoted to virtual teaching, virtual education, and how really Herculean effort that must have been and continues to be. And I just, so I just want to just really express my appreciation to you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. Councilmember Kim Kanbang.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. And my name is Kim Kanbang, and one of the new members on council. Some of the issues that are close to my heart have been mentioned, especially the racial equity and inclusion aspect of our policy and implementation. Certainly, with COVID-19, it brought out the worst and the best of all of us. And so a lot of the issues surrounding racism, issues of folks who are unhoused to be housed, I believe, the number of 600 students that are unhoused, how we can help support that. And, of course, the digital divide. I know Renton School Foundation and the district and Rhodey, I believe the city was also involved in supporting that initiative a few weeks back. But, yeah, so thank you for the partnership and the continued partnership that we'll have. So looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Councilmember Venedetti.
Hi, thank you so much. Yes, I am the newest council member. I was appointed in February and had about two trips to the dais before we went into this world. And so it is, it has been a very, a very different way to govern in this context. So I have not had the opportunity to meet with this group altogether. I can only say that I have had the privilege of working with some of you in different boards and commissions throughout the city and know you to be, know you to be awesome and amazing and doing great work. President Pam, I am so sad that I will not have, you know, more opportunity to work with you because you know how much I respect you. And it's, I know that this is, that this is the thing that you've chosen, and I will say, those are very, very, very big shoes for anybody to fill. So as far as, you know, when I came to this position, when I was in my appointment interviews, I was asked what were some of the things that were most important to me? And those things still remain important to me. And those are affordable housing. You know, kids who are housed learn best. So we want to make sure that our kids and our families are in safe, in safe and affordable housing. I also really, I'm a librarian as a professional in my, I don't want to say day job, but in my other job. And I have a real passion for digital equity. And so a lot of what is being said here about making sure that access is kept at a key level, that we really work together to try and make that a reality for our families as far as digital equity. That is something that's really, truly important to me as well. And, you know, finally, I feel that some of the other things that we could be working together on are, you know, issues, making sure that people have a greater level of food security. That's been something that's really been a tragic consequence of the pandemic is that we have so many more families that go hungry. And again, hungry kids have a hard time learning. And, you know, I, I can only, as a parent myself, say that this is the group of people here who can do the work together to try and get us to a better place for all of our, all of the kids and families. So thank you very much for the time that you are taking tonight and all the time that you take, all the time. And I'm very excited that we'll have a chance to work.
Thank you, Councilmember Venedetti. I would also like to welcome the Mayor Amanda Pogboni. And Mayor, if you want to give us your thoughts about our relationship with the school district, please do so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President Perez. So first, I want to say thank you to you for having this meeting here at the end of the year. This would have been an easy year for us to skip and gloss over with all the technical difficulties and the challenges we have having these meetings. And I think this relationship is extremely important. And so to continue to have this meeting, and like Councilmember McIrving suggested, even solidify it more, I'm in favor of. I really am. I think that some of the things that we've done in the past together, Councilmember Prince pointed a couple of them out. We have very similar goals in terms of taking care of our community. And I think that they overlap continuously. And the more that we can do together as a group, the better we're able to bring those services. So thank you all for being here. This is, this is really good. You know, one of the things that makes Renton a very special city is the relationships and the collaboration between organizations, not only government organizations, but private organizations working with government organizations. So a relationship like this is extremely important to the city's and to the residents. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, everybody. My thoughts is, as well as some of the things that you have already mentioned, I think are very good priorities. President Teal, I really want to thank you for your service and for everything that you have done for the credit goods, for the Renton School District, as well as for our community. In my list of priorities, I kind of echo what Councilmember McIrving had said. I said, I think that we meet once a year for an hour. We brainstorm for an hour, and we say all the things that we can do, but then we don't meet until the next year. And then we discuss again the same things, and we want to collaborate, but we really don't have that, or we have not implemented that system that has a follow-up on what are we doing? And if we're going to do things together, I will actually support to have more a kind of a retreat that we can meet for a longer time, that we can set up an agenda and how we're actually going to implement these kind of things that we can do together. Because I think we have so many things in common that so many people call us, asking us for things that they are supposed to be calling the school board directors. And I think the same probably happened to you guys, that people don't see the line of what is, you know, what jurisdiction versus your jurisdiction. In this year especially, it has been very, very challenging, the digital equity. The amount of emails and the amount of people that have called us, asking us what we can do to make sure that every single student has access to internet has been very, very a challenge for everybody. So let's start our conversation, what we can do as a city and what the school board can also provide us with some information about how many families or students do not have access to internet. So having these kind of conversations, I think, are very important so to know that the people that we are serving together, because I have to say that the people that the school, the Renton School Board members, actually, your community is larger than ours because that's the district that is distributed. But at least for the people that we are serving together, how can we can collaborate in better ways and more effective ways? With that, I want to open the floor for comments or questions or ideas. And the way that we have done it in the past is we raise a hand digitally, or you raise a hands, and I see you guys, and then I call your name, and you can add to that conversation. And I think we have staff available also to answer some of the questions that some school board members are asking regarding about implementation of some of the policies that we have been passing this year to resolve some of the issues that we have had with COVID-19. With that, I open the floor for any questions, comments, or concerns. Come on. Who's going to be the first?
Well...
Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm very curious. In terms of the conversation that you had last year, was there anything that came out of that conversation that hasn't been spoken to yet in this meeting? Is there, is there anything that's, you know, was a priority last year that we haven't touched on yet in this year's meeting? Thank you.
Who would like to answer that question? I think a lot of the conversation that happened last year was about the sharing of common facilities. That was a lot of the priority of the conversation of last year. How can we, a city, use their facilities? And then, as Renton School District, can use our facilities? And how can we do that in a more effective way?
Facilities that we're not using.
Yeah, that are closed. So that, that was one of the, of the, we took a lot of time talking about that. Dr. Berquist.
I think we talked about security as well, and that is just not the top of the list anymore since we're not in the schools.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Safety and security. Councilmember Corman?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of had an interesting idea. I, I can't remember when we're supposed to get the census information, but it would be fun to, you know, plan a retreat or something around as we start getting data from the census. And I know in, in, you know, past decades, it's been really interesting to find out where the, the, you know, families with young kids are coming in and, and just sort of monitor, track what, what's happening from one decade to the next. And I know past years, we've been almost surprised, overjoyed by the number of, of, you know, families that have found this area. It's, it's obviously getting, Renton's getting more expensive, so we might see some of that changing. But it does seem like that, you know, that might be kind of a nexus for us to really get together and do some retreat planning, lay out a decade.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Venedetti.
Thank you, Council President. I am going to ask each of the members of the school board and then also you Superintendent Patnau, if you had one ask of this council tonight, what would it be?
To make it easier, I'm gonna go around the room again, so not everybody's speaking at the same time. So I would start with the superintendent.
I would just, less of an ask, but just wanting to let you know of a possible opportunity. And that is, you may recall a little over a year ago, the district passed a $249.6 million bond, which is the largest in district history, as well as we had over 70% support, which was the highest percentage of folks voting yes or to approve a measure in our district's history. And one of the items in there is a baseball field, which is about $5.2 million is where we've kind of pegged that. And that's because you will recall that Renton High School, we can't really put a new field in the west, on the fields west of the school. And one, because it's in the pathway of the airport, and two, because there's believed to be a longhouse under there in the northwest corner. And so I think that there's a chance where we could partner on either an existing facility that the city might have, so, and I'm just throwing this out, you know, Liberty Park, where we have some funds to actually improve it, or looking for property as well, something that would be not only an asset for the Renton High School baseball and fast pitch teams, but, but an asset for the city and greater community as well. And so I think that there's an opportunity for us to move in that direction very, very soon if, if the city has an interest in that.
Thank you. Kelly, do you, do you, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Council President Perez. Hi Superintendent Patnau and school board, nice to see you. Just to let you know, we are in preliminary conversations. I'm working on a meeting with Dr. Maeco to talk about what type of opportunities may be out there and obviously have to involve our mayor in those discussions, but that's something that is on our agenda coming up.
Thank you, Kelly. President Pam Teal.
I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Patnau said in regards to, you know, Renton High and no baseball field because of the airport. I'm kind of curious where we are on that.
I think Martin is on the line or someone from transportation that can help us with that question. I'd say Martin here, okay? Martin? Can you hear me, Martin? You're muted.
Sorry, there I am. Hopefully, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we're hearing you. Thank you, Martin.
Yes, thank you. Yes, good evening all. My name is Martin Pastus. I'm the new Public Works Administrator for the City of Renton, having just joined the organization on June 1st. So it's nice to meet all of you. In regards to the airport and where we're at, at this point in time, we, as you may be aware, the city undertook some work with a firm who specializes in airport law and aviation law. And looked at developing a strategy in order to move forward. We've got that, we've got a draft of that strategy where there are some elements of that strategy we look to, to move forward. Unfortunately, it's not a silver bullet. There's not a one size fits all. This is going to be sort of a series of implementations. It's going to be working with the community. It's going to be working with our partners at the airport and with the FAA to try and advance some of the issues that you had brought up about the difficulty in, in terms of implementing the long-term airport aircraft designation. We're reexamining that fact based upon the current activity level at the airport and what's going on there. In addition, the, the practicality of trying to implement those extensions of the runway either into Lake Washington or into the city south, into the city downtown area and the school district, very difficult and problematic process in, in terms of moving forward. So it's really, it's a multi-sort of pronged strategy in order for us to, to move forward. But we are just in initial stages of having conversations. We're starting to have some conversations with our community partners in terms of Boeing and others that would be impacted that. And then started, we'll begin sort of a process moving forward there. But it really, our goal is to try, to the extent possible, is to eliminate any extension to that runway because of the community impacts of that and the, and the practicality of trying to do that, not only from a environmental perspective, but also from a cost perspective. The initial estimates of those improvements were in the neighborhood of $150 to $200 million. So it's a very expensive process to move forward. So we, we need to work with the FAA in terms of, and having them understand the practicality and the issues involved with doing that. Hopefully, that, that explains the issue as we, as we now know it.
Thank you, Martin. President Teal, if you have more questions regarding the airport, I, please, I welcome to send you an email and Martin can address them directly to you. Because as he said, it, it, the process right now in a non-process, it's almost that we, we are still working on the table.
Still always appreciate the partnership and knowing what's going on. So it's just not from my perspective for the school board and school district. So thank you.
Thank you, President Teal. Thank you, Martin, as well.
Welcome, Council President.
Thank you. I will give the microphone to Director Alisa Louis.
I, I think if, to answer the question, if there was like one takeaway I would be most interested in, it would be around systems. And I think it kind of echoes what everybody, many people have addressed around more time together or more frequent meetings or more in-depth meetings. But I think that idea of coming together and talking and then not knowing what the system is to move forward, whether that looks like joint, like as a board, we have some joint legislative priorities amongst ourselves. So does that look like some meeting to do something that would be all of Renton Schools and Renton City Council together? Does that look like some staff collaboration in some different way? But that's just kind of my thought of what's next for us.
Thank you. The school board member, I don't see you in the floor. I, I, I'm missing one of you. I'm sorry. My computer is very weird right now. So Dr. Avanti Berquist, I will, I will go with you.
I think similar to Alisa, that what we've already been talking about, what I would really love to see come out of this is just more communication, collaboration. And if that's more meetings, then that's great. Just, I think that's going to lead to a lot more change and improvements is just being able to, to talk, talk about what we're going through and what we need.
Thank you. Renton School Board Member Gloria Hodge.
Sure, thank you. My, my question and thoughts are post-COVID, whenever that time comes and what that looks like for us. But as our students return to in-person learning, just the safety and security for them, as I mentioned earlier, my concerns with homelessness and addiction. As a board, we represent and, and operate together, but my district is the Skyway area, downtown Renton area, so unincorporated King County and the downtown area. And so I, I see a lot near these unfortunate times around Renton High, for example. So I'll just use Renton High, for example, but, you know, the increase with homelessness and when, once our students do return and are walking to school or driving or, you know, being dropped off or school buses, what, what does that look like for us as a city and school district for our students and also the needs for our community?
Thank you. I, I'm gonna have a following question to you. Are you concerned about the safety of the students?
Somewhat, and just how a lot of, I would say, a lot of residents and businesses are operating limited or working from home. So there's an increase that I see with the need in our community, as I mentioned. And so some, somewhat of their safety, but also just how, how to help those in need and, and to see that our community is safe for the students to return and not really always engaging with what, what might be happening right now as there's, you know, our, our schools are closed and businesses are limited and many residents are working from home. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. And I was gonna call next Dr. Stephanie McGurbin, but I don't see her right now. So I will wait until she joins us again, and then I, we will give her the opportunity. Okay, any more questions, some concerns at this point?
Council President Perez, if you, if you would like, I could answer some of the questions that you had regarding connectivity. And we're actually, we just did a family survey that closed on the 4th, and so we'll be analyzing that again. And, and we've always estimated that we have somewhere between 80 to 90% of our families who have some level of access to the internet. Now, whether that's the best access is a whole other question. We have gotten out over, goodness, it's well over 11,000 Chromebooks. We have 15,000 students in the district. We have another order of Chromebooks that had been delayed by the trade war between the US and China that actually just got in a couple of weeks ago. They were supposed to have been here before the start of the season. Additionally, we've gotten out, last number I saw was, I believe, over 600 hotspots and we're in conversations with different organizations to get some additional hotspots. But more importantly, what we've done and our team has done is actually tried to determine which hotspots work in the best sections, in that, in the certain different sections of the district. And so what we've seen is like, for example, T-Mobile's hotspots, and I'm making this up, but it, they might work the best in the Highlands versus the ones that work on the West Hill. Additionally, we're trying to get the ones that have more bandwidth so that additional folks can be on there. And also what we've done, whether it's been through the Schools Foundation, also Amazon just made a donation as well, is trying to help families get, and we've been in conversations with Comcast to get families access to the higher speed internet. The internet essentials is great, but with students being on Zoom, it's very hard if there are multiple kids in a household to be able to have that work. But the one thing I just want to say that throughout this pandemic around connectivity, and also I just want to acknowledge the hard work of the staff in the city as well as the district that is, they're working together on a daily basis almost, I think, around equity work, or whether it's up on Sunset or up in Skyway, that, that work has been phenomenal. But additionally, the staff in our district, one of the silver linings, I would say, of the pandemic has been we're in better contact with our families at the school level than ever. And so I, I did home visits a month and a half ago, but we have staff going out and doing home visits on a weekly basis, helping them to connect devices and also to teach things like, hey, you can't connect your Xbox to the hotspot because that's going to take up some of the bandwidth as well. And so our staff has been doing that constantly. And even with the rise in COVID cases over the last couple of weeks, we still can try, continued, our staff has continued to try to do that in as safe a manner as possible to support folks. But the state has obviously seen the need around connectivity. And I, I do want to say everything is relative, and I think we're blessed to live in the area that we do when I'm on calls with superintendents in rural and remote districts. And so I think that there's challenges that we've all faced, but I think that there's also some great opportunities and partnerships. And as Director Hodge mentioned, once we come out of COVID, I, I think that we have the potential to continue our family engagement work in, in a manner that connects us more to what the needs might be. In addition to the work that Linda hosts, is obviously, I see some folks on the call like Benita Horn, has worked very closely with Benita and the team at the city. And I, so I just think that there's great work taking place by the staff in both systems. And, and I want to acknowledge that, but also say that it, it hasn't been perfect, but the connectivity issues, I've really seen the community, both in Renton and King County and the state for that matter, rally around it to get our kids access.
Thank you very much for your answer. If there is a place that I think we can strongly collaborate and keep collaborating, it's in this one, to make sure that everybody, everybody has good connectivity and nobody is left behind. Because it breaks my heart to know that students that are already challenged in schooling normally, normally will now present the challenge that they cannot connect. But I really appreciate all the work that your staff and, and your team have, have done on this. And this is one of the areas that I agree with a lot of you, that I think that when we work on a legislative agenda, if it's something that we can work together, if it's a ask, you know, for the legislators to help us with this, I think we should do it together because we will make a stronger case. And, and one of the great things about these new challenges that we have had with this meeting is I remember 23 years ago, when I worked all around the state with different school districts, it was the challenge to some parents come to some meetings. Well, now the good thing is that the parents don't have to leave their house for the meeting. So I think this is one of those pull-ups that now we can connect better, you know, with our community in so many different levels. And, and again, when we're talking about equity, we're talking about the creative diversity that, of the community that we serve. And how can we serve them better? And, and, and I think that we can create an agenda that is very similar from both of those entities to work together to advance, you know, racial equity in our community. With that, I appreciate again your answer, and I will move to Councilmember Hala.
Hi, thank you, yes. And I just want to ask a question related to serving our diverse community of students. And I'm wondering, is there, in this virtual reality, is, is there a role or what is the role of the School Resource Officer?
President Teal, would you like me to take that question, or would you? I, one thing I would say is that I, I had the opportunity to meet with some of the leadership in the Police Department like a, a week ago. And we talked about that, that very topic. And so one thing I know that the city's been working on is just trying to fill all the SRO positions. We had a couple of, of openings and getting those filled. And I, I think, and Officer Cummings was on that call, who was the SRO at Lindbergh. And so we talked about different ideas, didn't really land on anything, but we also want to be sensitive during this time as well, that I've, I've heard about some other districts that have just had like officers pop onto Zoom calls and it kind of freaks people out too. So, so I think that the thing is, it's really the conversation and the, the partnership about if there are needs that we're seeing within the schools, where the Police Department of the city more broadly, that where, where we could partner. But I also think it's in preparation for return. And I think that one of the strengths of the SRO partnership in the city and the district has been the officers have been phenomenal, and they've built tremendously strong relationships with our students, especially the three officers that were there last, who have been in, in their positions for several years. And I think that's been one of the reasons why, broadly speaking, that we've, we've heard from, we've, obviously, the SRO topic can be controversial, but we've also heard a lot of positives, and I think it's because of the approach that those officers have taken. And the thing I've appreciated from the former chief, as, as well as the interim chief and Mr. Rutledge at the Police Department, is just the openness to whatever suggestions the district has. So if there's concerns, how do we work through those? And I think that that's what you have to have. And given that, that, you know, the context can change and the politics can change and there can be incidents that can drive change, is when we're open and having those conversations. is when we're open and having those conversations, I think that that leads to a more positive outcome. More directly to your question is, obviously, the SRO contract was redone, and part of that was to address the fact that during COVID, there's just not a whole heck of a lot going on in our schools currently. But what there was a definite commitment to last week was that if there are opportunities to have SROs participate in a meaningful fashion, whether it's with staff or students or families, that we would definitely be open to those opportunities.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have seen that some of you have raised your hand, but I want to give opportunity first to Dr. Stephanie McHirvey to answer the first question of Councilmember Benedetti. Dr. McHirvey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry about that. I'm leaving my video off in the hopes that maybe I won't get dropped again. Thank you. I guess I would just echo what my colleagues have been mentioning about wanting to meet more frequently, more often. I know we all are very busy and have lots of meetings, but I really do the idea of either a retreat of some kind. I really liked Councilmember Corman's idea of looking at data and making decisions with data, census data, and, you know, different kinds of data points. I think that would be really helpful. And I'm wondering if maybe we could use that time as well for building a shared vision of what it is that, you know, both entities are trying to do and how we can support each other, because I think one hour once a year is just simply not enough time together. And so if we're meeting for, you know, a longer retreat perhaps, or quarterly or something of that nature, I think, I think we could start doing a lot of the work that we're talking about today.
Thank you, Dr. McHirvey, and I second your ask. Dr. Avanti Berquist.
Talking about SROs, I was wondering, as a city, how are we looking at law enforcement? And is there anything that's going on in the city with that? Because we had a couple of people ask us about SROs, not a lot actually, but it just got me wondering about what is happening in the city.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Berquist. So I have two people on the line here. I have our interim chief and our former chief, so whoever, which one of you want to take that question?
I guess I could take it. I guess to clearly understand, are you talking about the relationship with the community right now, or more in line with our SRO program and what it looks like within the schools?
Overall relationship with the community.
You know, I think, and much like yourself, we've had some negative feedback, but for the most part, the officers on the street have been getting nothing but positive interactions with the community as we go through. Even, we understand, even when there's been demonstrations in the city, we reach out to them, make sure it can go off as safely as possible, what can we do to assist? And for those, most part on those, we've had positive interactions with everyone that's coming to the city. We understand that from law enforcement perspective, we can make changes, and that's what we've done, is, you know, tried to be transparent in what we do. We've posted all of our use of force, our policies, everything online, so people can see them, they can comment back to us. And what can we do to change, especially to make it more centric to Renton? How can we be the best for our community that we can? So I think we're open to those conversations, and we do that through meetings we have with various groups in the city, whether it be the Renton African American Pastoral Group, LGBTQ group. We're working with our community services to meet with Chinese and Vietnamese group. We have a sergeant that's fantastic and does a lot of outreach with Hispanic group. So through the years, we've really tried to plant the seed of that commitment and collaboration with the community. So I think all in all, you know, it's paying dividends right now, where we have that open relationship where they can come to us and talk to us, and it's not adversarial. And we hope to continue that. I know Chief Van Bailey started it, and we're gonna keep going with it.
Thank you, Chief.
You're right.
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, that the, something I've been very proud to be, you know, associated with is that the whole 27 years I've been a council member, I've heard from our Police Department how much they're focused on de-escalation of events. I mean, they really truly have led this state in de-escalation training. They've been one of the only two accredited departments, I think, for many years in the state. And, you know, I had the privilege to serve with Don Person for 20 years on council, who I sometimes think was one of the original, like, community police officers who really set a tone. You know, it's maintaining the peace and tranquility in our city by getting to know people, by helping them through their crises. You know, that we always knew that the riot gear and pepper spray were gonna stay in the closet. If people were out protesting, we were gonna go out and listen to people and make sure they were safe out there. And so, you know, I haven't walked in Jennifer Durkin's shoes or Carmen's best shoes, but I just, I really feel like Renton is a different place, and we handle our issues differently, and I want to thank the department for that. I think what we're seeing is some spillover concerns from people that, you know, got injured in protests in Seattle. In general, they don't get the same treatment from our department.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. I know that several of you also brought the question about how can we work together on issues of mental health. And last, last week, we have, two weeks ago, we have a presentation about some of the services that we are gonna be providing in the future in the news, in the news center that we have in Sunset. And I'm sorry, I think the new name is Sunset Neighborhood, I don't remember, I'm sorry. But Chief, are you there, you can help me? And the other one is that, of course, this is something that we still have, a lot of these conversations, we still have it for our next retreat, for next, for next year, because there are a lot of things that we refer for future conversations about what else we can do to provide more the level of human services within our community. And it's great that you guys will want to collaborate and partner with us on this. So Chief, or someone from CED, could you provide a little bit more information about the community of the hole that we had last week, no, two weeks ago, about the services that we're providing now on Sunset? Really, I don't see.
Sure, glad to. First off, this good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council President Perez, Superintendent Patnod, and school district members, council members. It's, I have to say to Councilmember Teal, Pam, I just can't imagine the school board without you. Pam and Councilmember Teal, it's just been amazing, her relationship with us and CED over the years. Anyway, Pam, good luck, and we're gonna miss you a lot. Council President Perez, back to your question regarding the multi-service center. It's probably a great example of partnership between the city and other special purpose districts, specifically a partnership between the Rent Housing Authority and the city, joining with us Neighborhood House as well as Health Point, really created through a partnership, an organization and a facility to really meet the unique needs based on the demographics of the Sunset community, which is the most diverse as well as the most impoverished area in the city. And it was just, it spoke volumes to what can it be achieved with collaboration and cooperation between different partners in terms of meeting a community need. I will say, not the city couldn't have done it on its own, Rent Housing Authority could have done that on its own, Neighborhood House could have done this, Health Point couldn't have done it on its own. But together, working collaboratively, we were able to provide an incredible array of support services to people in need in the Sunset area.
Thank you, Chief. Could you remind me who is, who is the one that are gonna be providing, that is providing a mental health support?
That's, that is, some, not, it's a
Valley Cities.
Valley Cities, yes.
Valley Cities, thank you very much. Of course, we have way more work to do in this area. We sign our own agenda and ways to collaborate with you guys. I don't know in your, I don't know, Dr. Berquist, if you have any, any specific idea that you would like to bring at this point at the table, or is this just a ways that we can collaborate in the future to provide more mental health for our community?
Nothing specific, just as a community collaborating more, because we do have a lot of mental health resources, and it's just collaborating more so we can be more impactful.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McHirvey?
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just wanted to jump in real quick on the mental health topic, because I don't know if members of the council are as aware of the program I know that's being piloted in the Rent School District on social emotional learning, how impactful that is for down the line. I mean, when we talk about solving the mental health crisis, a big component of that starts with our youth and identifying and diverting some of these cases earlier that could turn out to be end cases that we'd end up with. So I just really want to second that and highlight that as an area that I really would love to put an emphasis on, that we can collaborate, because I think whether that be advocacy in Olympia or anything else, because I know what the commonality we both share on this is, we would love to do more, but where are the resources, where is the funding capacity? And so I think jointly identifying funding to help tackle this issue, that this is something we should be supporting as a city, because it does affect, obviously, all of us in the end. So that's, just wanted to underscore that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember McHirvey, well said. Councilmember Ban?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Dr. Berquist, for bringing up the topic. And certainly, for our council meeting today, we do have a proclamation awareness on health, mental health awareness month. Certainly, that's usually May, right, it's the national hall of month proclamation. But because of this year, everything has been thrown off guard, but certainly, we've seen the increase in our community members, you know, from, at least from my standpoint, from seniors initially, and then more in the recent months of youth and mental health, anxiety, depression in our youth, increasing in our community, in our district. And so that's something that we are acknowledging and, of course, proclaiming tonight, even though it's December, but recognizing that COVID-19 really brought more of those issues. And then just back to the conversation of our police and what we've done in the community. I know there's always room for improvement, but certainly, the conversation after the murder of George Floyd has gotten, helped our community, our city council, to discuss more and laid what it means when it comes to hate and bias. It definitely did speed up the conversation versus just the terminology of back then, where we had Chinese and Asian, anti-Asian and anti-Chinese sentiment around the early onset of COVID-19 pandemic. But lots to work on, and definitely we love partnership with the district, and certainly for our kids' mental health and our community's overall mental health. It's very important, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ban. And Dr. Berquist, if you want more information about the things that our Police Department does or don't do, or have more questions, more than happy to send you an email with the link of the last presentation of our department, of the things that we, where we're standing right now, things that we don't do definitely, and the approach that we have as a city on public safety.
If you already have a presentation, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Corman?
Just simply, I wanted to pile on with my colleagues and say that I, I think that's a great idea about maybe some joint training on mental health. I'd love to work that with the school district also. So it's especially important now. I'm obviously, you know, just like everybody, we're seeing signs of depression all throughout the community, you know, fostered by this pandemic and as well as just the challenging times we're in. So I'm fully on board if we can set something like that up.
I actually just remembered something that I had been talking to the chamber about, and I think the chamber was talking to people at the city about if we could collaborate in some way, the way Bainbridge Island has, they developed a, like a crisis response so that the whole community participates in these types of things. And what, one of the things they did was mental health first aid, which is something that, you know, it'd be great if we could get a lot of our community trained in that. So that is something we could collaborate on.
Great ideas. Pretty, I see that you are raising your hand. Do you want something to share with the board?
Thank you, and it's my pleasure to be here. And again, we'll be very sad to see you leave, Council Board President Pam Teal. I just wanted to share a couple of you brought up, looking for the census results, and the earliest indicators we have is that we might get census results in no earlier than April, but I just wanted to say that that might be a good time to consider having maybe a half-day retreat or something as a next, maybe, in-depth information and communication session. That's also after the council has their retreat and looks at plans for the next year. But would certainly be a good time to potentially come together and look at, you know, some core objectives and goals together. And we'll have some new data and some new information, and would be definitely something for us to consider. We really enjoyed a wonderful partnership on some, many key issues, but I just wanted to say that, you know, something that, you know, we could take on, and definitely with the mayor's permission, I could help lead, bringing at least, you know, help plan that together around the time we get the data.
Great.
Thank you, Pretty, and I would just to thank again the superintendent for always being on the table with the major inclusion task force. At least one or two people from your staff are always there, you know, bringing the issues of how can we collaborate together of being an inclusive city, and more important, bringing an equity lens to all our policies, and that perspective is always very good. So talking a little bit about something that two of you mentioned, which is how can we do proclamations together? I think that's a great idea. I think we have a lot of things in common, and I think it will be very powerful. Here, I'm gonna want to hear from the mayor, because our proclamations are within his authority, and I want to hear what he thinks about this.
I don't have an issue with it. I think it's a great idea. We do have a lot of common interests, and, you know, we could speak on certain issues as one voice. I think it's, I think it's a fine idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I will echo that if we eventually have a retreat where we can put an agenda together, we can then decide which proclamations we want to do together annually, because there are some of them, as Councilmember Ban mentioned, that we do it every, every year, because they are such important issues that we want to highlight them a year, and from there, if there are others that will come, you know, we can work together on that. Any more comments, questions, or ideas that we would like to discuss at this time? Obviously, we are all uncertainly about how our economy is gonna look in the future, at least for next year, and also how are we gonna be dealing with the transition of now that you, people are gonna have seen, or the orders, how is this gonna look like in our community? So that a lot of them are gonna be looking at us to what is gonna be from the new normal, the next new normal, and then to come back to the back normal, that now it's not gonna look anything like it was before. If not going to look anything like it was before, if I make any sense. So at this point, I will give the floor to Councilmember McCorvin.
Thank you, Madam President. So on that note, actually, you jogged my memory on something I was thinking about previously, which does kind of deal on a post-COVID world and something to start thinking about. And if I sounded negative in the beginning on some of our partnership, we have so many great things, especially in the area of planning and development, where we partnered on great projects together that just, that stand as pillars in our community. And the area I'm wondering, and if we've done as much work together or where we can work on the workforce development side of the recovery together, is on economic development. We have a great, with the training the students in Rent School District receive, they are well positioned to go on and to other higher education institutions, and it's a great homegrown product. I'd love to be able to, you know, if they want to go out and travel the world, that's great, but if many want to stay, work at home and remain in their community, I'd love to be able to find opportunities for them. And so if economic development is an area we can work together in partnership, perhaps with Renton College or the Chamber, I think that's another area that we could certainly post-COVID work on, making sure that we are able to help make sure there are jobs in the community, family wage, paying, good paying jobs for those students. I think it also ties in with the equity work in terms of our diversity, if we're making sure we provide those avenues, opportunity. I think that, you know, it all kind of fits together, and I don't know if that's an area we've focused in the past or not. Chip, feel free to weigh in if there's, if there's work that's been done on this or if this is something we haven't really explored. I'll admit, I didn't come up with this idea on my own, it came out of a panel, a higher education panel I attended earlier in the week, and they were really focused more on the higher education institutions, but I know the district does great work with RTC and other colleges and universities in the area, so I was hopeful maybe that's an area the city could be, give help if possible.
Thank you, Councilmember McCorvin. Well said. Superintendent?
I just want to say, I've been so impressed by the council members and the board members who are all interested in more meetings. And so just with that caveat, I'll put out there is, I think that there's also some opportunities for both board members and council members to sit on committees that the other organizations, institutions have, right? And so to Councilmember McIrvin's point, we have a CTE committee that often connects both with higher ed as well as the workforce and the Chamber, strong relationships there. Our CTE director sits on the Chamber board, and I know that also that the city has a whole host of committees as well, where there could be opportunities for our board members to sit on those committees. I think that there could be some potential sharing of what, if folks don't know what those committees might be, that could extend the conversation even beyond just a conversation between the council board, but I was just thinking about that.
Thank you, Superintendent. I think that's a great idea. I know that in the past, President Gil has been very helpful, being in some of the temporary committees, like the budget committee and some of those committees that she has been invited to be a member, but your idea is great to have more voices on some of the long-term committees that we have in the city. Again, this is a discretion of the mayor, he appoints the people that answer force and committees, so I would like to hear from you, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing like being put on the spot over and over and over again.
I don't want to, I don't want to make a decision that I know that at the end of the day is not ours, it's the executive branch.
No, I get that, I appreciate it. No, I think, I think it's a great idea. Obviously, we need to vet it out and see how it would work out with schedules and everything else, but I certainly don't have a problem with overlap. You know, especially if we can end up, I think Councilmember McIrvin's idea was brilliant. I think that there's really something to that. You know, where that workload comes from is yet to be determined, but I do think that the overlap is healthy and can be nurtured in a number of areas. So I don't, I don't see a problem as it stands right now, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have an ask. I, one of the challenges, bigger challenges for us during this pandemic is outreach. As much as we think that in some areas, some meetings have been very effective to connect with our community, there is nothing like that one-on-one, that we, people see us everywhere and they can talk to us and let us know what they want or what they want. In the past, when we have had, when we want public input, I have always advocated that, especially with our diverse community, it's easier to go to them, to ask them to come to us. And when I always say go to them, sometimes the best place to go to them is within the schools, because sometimes our community, they have to engage with the schools more than they have to engage with us. And I would like to see more areas of collaboration where we can, if we are addressing the same community for different issues, we can do it jointly, that we can present some of the plans that we have as a city and we really need input of the community, because it's important, I know how busy the community is. So if we can join some of your meetings, what you have with the parents, it will be easier for us to have a larger voice on some of the ideas that we have to implement. So I know that this is also something that you have to discuss, but I have been pushing it very hard since I got elected, knowing that in diverse communities, sometimes it's very challenging, you know, to engage with different authorities. So I really want to make it easier for our community to be able to talk to us, to be with us. Okay, any more comments or questions or concerns?
Yeah, I just wanted to say in my closing comment that, you know, I started out by talking about that my wife and I raised five kids here, their ages 22 to 35. The oldest three all purchased homes right here in Renton. I think the youngest two might eventually do that, they all live here and the grandkids all live here. And to me, that's, I just, I think that's the best evidence we have that collectively we're doing a really great job. You know, they have lots of friends that are doing the same thing, they're, Renton's not a city that people are growing up and moving away from, it's a city where they're deciding that they really feel at home and it's a real community and they want to raise their own children, which speaks really well to the partnerships, I think, over all these years. And I just, I'd do anything to see that continue, which does mean we're going to have to address all the things we've discussed about affordability and racial equity and justice and, but stay on task. I know my kids love the diversity of our community, that's one of the draws that keep them here, and I think that we can, we can just continue that. I'd like to continue to have people want to, want to raise their own families here.
Thank you, Councilmember Corbin. Councilmember Ban?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I have two things. One is I'm looking forward to the next steps, right? I'm sure we'll hear back from, I'm not going to point whoever's in charge of this, taking notes and then giving us the next steps as far as the agenda, because I'm more of like a timeline kind of a person and process, I'm looking forward for that. But just in regarding to outreach to diverse population, I understand the benefit of meeting people where they're at. And sometimes it might not be appropriate for city elected officials to be in school, because schools oftentimes, at least for some cultures, is a safe environment. And for us, some folks who've had bad experiences with RSO might not feel that safe, right? So to, you know, for me being part of the community and now part of an elected body, it is something I have to be mindful for our community as well, because our privilege and our vantage point is different from other communities. So I think meeting people where they're at in events such as their community or their meeting, they invite us by invitation is important, and outreach is always culturally appropriate outreach, I think it's important for us to keep in mind. But definitely looking forward to see how the school, district, and our city will continue and strengthen our relationship. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ban. And for clarification, I was misunderstood. When I say that we can work together, I didn't mean us as council members, I meant staff. I meant the administration, that if we are going to, sometimes we do open houses for transportation. So if we, normally during the, when we have well-known and recognized neighborhood associations, they have meetings every month and they invite the staff to talk about some of these plans or projects, and sometimes they're very successful. But if we are going to have something that will impact directly the community in certain school that is there, instead of us inviting us to a different venue, and when I say us, again, it's not us as elected official, I'm talking about the planners of the city or transportation or community services, partnering more about, for example, if we have an event in community services for Halloween or for holidays, how can we, we, again, staff the city of Renton, can go and invite them and engage and make them feel welcome, they are part of our community and we wanted them. Again, I would never impose as a city official to be invited to something, because I know the limitations, so I want to clarify that. With that, anybody else has any questions or comments? So I don't see any. So I really want to thank you again. I know this was very, very challenging. I went, I saw that the year was ending and I say we have to have this meeting. I don't, the idea was to cancel it and I didn't think that we should have at least, if it's not the same kind of communication that we will have in person, I think the fact that we connect and we all agree that we can do more for the greater good for our communities is the most important thing that I take out of this meeting. So we are taking notes and I'm going to pass this button to Councilmember Corbin, which is going to be the president of the council next year, so he can make sure that he has schedules, they following up meetings for next year to continue this conversation, perhaps in a different platform or in a different format.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Ruth, for remembering to host this tonight and making sure it happens. And yeah, by all means, I've been taking down action items too, and I'm looking forward to some get-togethers. I thought Pretty, I thank her for pointing out the timing and I'm hoping, you know, maybe it's post-census data and post-vaccine, you know, maybe we can actually physically get together. That would really be meaningful. But whether we can physically get together or not, I think it's great to look at the data and I'll do some follow-through, I'll work with Armando and the district, make sure that we can find some times to get together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Once again, everybody, thank you for joining us, thank you for your inputs, and this is very important partnership for us. So again, thank you for all the work that you are doing. I don't know how a school district, seriously, it has been challenging for us, for you guys. This is a completely different ballgame, you do business in a different way and serving the best to our community. President Pam Thiel, once again, thank you for your service. We have been honored to work with you during these last years.
You're very kind, but you know, it's all of these people on this screen right here that make a difference, and Dr. Patnaud and the staff and the team and the teachers and the principals, everybody, you know, everybody just, the constant mission is to serve our students and our families. And I know you all believe in that for the city of Renton and the school district does the same. So we really should take our hats off to the leadership team and all of the principals and staff and teachers that are doing the tremendous work.
Absolutely.
So thank you for hosting this meeting and I just thank you for your kind words.
Thank you, thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, bye-bye.